Let me just start it, okay. Yeah, so let's just get that same question. So this is a graph you guys probably haven't seen before, right? So to calculate the x-intercept, we made y naught, okay? And then we got an answer of x equals naught and or x equals four with three. And all that means is that the x-intercept is going to be at naught and four with three, right? Okay, now they're asking calculate the stationary point. Now, if you remember how that graph looked, it basically looked like this. Do you go, and now what's important to understand is do you see how over here and over here? It's almost like it comes to like a halt. Do you guys see that? You guys, it almost comes to like a halt. And basically, the gradient at that point is zero. The gradients of the graph is zero because the tangent that we draw is a horizontal line. So that's why we say whenever you want to find this point, the stationary point where the graph is zero, the gradient is zero, you make the gradient equal naught. Does that make sense? Because at this point, the gradient is naught. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
So that's why you make the gradient naught. But what is the gradient? Well, there's a particular rule. So you multiply by the exponent and you subtract the exponent by one. So it becomes twelve x cubed minus twelve x squared. And that must equal naught because I want to find the stationary point. And I know that at the stationary point, the derivative or the gradient, derivative and gradient is the same thing, is equal to naught. So I can solve and then I'll get an answer of x equals naught or x equals one, okay? And this is actually what we saw on that graph. So basically, this is x equals naught, this is x equals one. So when x is naught, what is this? This means that when x is naught, the gradient is naught. When x is one, the gradient is naught. That's all this means, okay? And then it says classify each stationary point as a local minimum and a local maximum or a stationary point of inflection. Now, all this means, local minimum is that if you guys, you guys probably haven't seen a cubic graph yet. But basically, if you draw a cubic graph, it may look something like, like that. Do you, okay? Or do you guys see how this is like a minimum and this is a maximum? Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
So this is what we call a local minimum and a local maximum. Okay, local minimum, local maximum. And that's, that's what they mean here, local minimum, local maximum. And the question is, is it a local minimum or a local maximum? Achlaq, do you have any ideas?
No clue.
Okay, so there's, there's actually two ways that you can do it. But the way that I use works all the time. So the second way works most of the time, but not all the time. But the second way that I prefer works all the time. And the way you do it is that you, you can sub in the gradients. You draw the gradients. So you could just plot the gradient. So, so if, this is the graph of the gradient. This is the graph of the gradient. So what you, and you know, this is where the gradient is naught, right? So you could find the gradient to the left of the turning point of the stationary point and to the right of it.
Yes, because you have two answers, yeah.
Yes, but, but you're looking for the, you're looking for the, the value. So if, if you get a, you'll get a negative answer if you put it to the left. So you just try it in your calculator now. If you choose an answer of like minus, minus one. So subbing twelve times minus one cubed minus twelve minus twelve times minus one squared, it should be a negative answer. Do you get that? It's a negative answer, it's minus twenty-four.
Yeah.
So it's, it's negative. And what about after naught? So what about a half, which is between naught and one? Between naught and one. It should also be it should be a negative. It's still a negative answer. We subbing off. Did you subbing off?
Oh no, I subbed in two by mistake, sorry.
So you must, but you must sub it between the two. Okay, so do you see how before the turn, before the stationary point and after the stationary point, the gradient is negative? So what does that mean? It means the graph is just doing that. It's not turning upwards. Because if this was positive, then the graph would do that. The gradient goes from negative to positive. Do you see that? Achlaq?
Yes.
And then the same thing over here. You know the gradient is negative here. And then you chose, you subbed in two, right? What did you get?
I'm just double check quick.
When you subbed into, you got a positive or negative?
Positive.
You got positive, so what does that mean? The gradient's going from negative to positive on either side of one.
Yeah.
It means the graph is doing this. Do you see that?
Yes.
Because it's, because here it's negative. And then here is positive. And here is one. So that implies that this must be a minimum.
Yeah.
Do you see that?
Yes.
If the gradient went from positive to negative, what does that mean?
It's a maximum.
It's a maximum because it's going as positive and then it goes negative. Okay. And then how do you work out if it's a point of inflection? You just make the second
Second derivative.
Yeah, so you take the derivative or the derivative. And what's the derivative of the derivative?
Thirty-six x squared minus twenty-four x.
Yeah. Thirty-six x squared, which is right, yes, thirty-six x squared. And just for those who are watching, he's multiplying the exponent by the coefficient and subtracting exponent by one, minus twenty-four x, right?
Yes.
And then you can take out twelve as a common factor.
You can take twelve x as a common factor.
Twelve x, yeah, and then you get three x minus two.
Yeah.
Equals naught. Therefore, x equals naught and x equals three over two. So what does this mean? This means that
Isn't it two over three?
Sorry, sorry, two with three, sorry, sorry, two with three. What does this mean? This means that the graph, and I'm gonna use a terminology that some of you might not be used to. But we say it changes concavity. It changes and all this is explained in the concept videos. But basically, concavity is if you draw the, let me just bring this up there. If you draw a graph, do you guys, so I'm gonna draw some tangents, okay? Is the tangent above the graph or below the graph?
Below.
And over here?
Above.
Okay. And what do you notice here? At this point?
They meet.
Or they meet, but this is the point where the tangents change from being below to above. Okay, do you guys see that? It changes from being below to above the graph. Yeah. And this is what we mean by a change in concavity. That's all that we mean. A change in concavity. And we found, using this equation, we found that that change in concavity happens when x is naught and x is two with three. And you can kind of see that here, look here, guys. At naught, if you draw the tangents, yes, or the above or below the graph here? Guys? They are below the graph. But what happens after naught?
Above.
They are above, so that's why naught is a point of inflection. And that's what we calculated, we calculated to be at naught and two over three. And then we continue here, right? But then what happens here? Do you see it goes from being above to below? Do you guys see that? Over here?
Yes. Yeah.
And that's the second change in concavity. So this graph is unique because it has two points where it changes concavity. And, and this is, we've calculated that to be at naught and two over three. Okay. I know it's a lot, but the concept videos will explain all of this to you. And then maybe when you watch the concept videos and you come back to this, it'll make a lot more sense, okay? Calculate the point of inflection which you've done, sketch the graph, okay? And you have to sketch the graph. Okay, how would you sketch this graph? Well, what I would do is I would first work out the x-intercepts, okay, which we found would be, we found to be naught and naught and four with three, which is here. Okay, and I've actually made a video on the sketching cubic graphs. The, the second thing is to work out, so the first thing is the x-intercepts. The second thing is to, is to work out the, the gradients. And how the gradients change. So with this graph, the gradients, you would find, if you just subbed into the derivative, it starts off negative and then it's negative and then it's positive. So then I would automatically know that the graph is gonna do something like this. Do you guys see? Yeah. Okay. Um, actually, not the, not the, yeah. Okay. So basically, that's that question. I know it's a lot, but I want you guys to, if you, if you're still not sure, we've made like nine or ten concept videos on calculus, it's a big section, guys. But, um, yeah. This is a bit easier, Amaro's question. It's basically just on taking derivatives. And it's, it's, it's a bit, it's, it's a good start, so let's do that one. So they want us to find the derivative. So I'm gonna draw the rule, guys. So the rule is if I've got an, if I've got an expression like y equals a times x to the power of n, then the derivative, which we write as dy, the change in y, or change in x, which is just the gradient, equals n times a times x to the power of n minus one. So we're just multiplying by the exponent. We're multiplying by the exponent. And we're subtracting the exponent by one, that's all. See, if I've got x squared, it becomes two x. If I've got x cubed, it becomes three x squared. Okay, that's all that can mean, yes?
I actually have to go somewhere, I have to do something quick. Is it fine if I watch, watch the recording afterwards?
No, no problem, it's, it's okay. If you can come back, that would be great. Yeah, okay.
All right, Chigra.
Okay, so, okay, so this is how we take the derivative. Now, this is a, is a bit of a, like, it, it doesn't look like you can apply this rule to this. So we have to change this, we have to make it look more linear, like on one line. And you probably would realize that you can actually factorize this expression, two x squared minus eleven x plus fifteen. You can factorize it to be x minus three times two x minus five. Okay, and that's over three minus x. Can I ask you guys a question? Can you, can you cancel this?
Um, no.
Okay. My says no, Uwez, what do you say?
I think, I think you can maybe, because I think there's something that you can change the rule, the sign in the bracket and then three goes to the front and the x goes to the back, I think.
You've got, you've got, you've got it some, nearly there, anyone else, Navila? Any ideas? Okay. You can, Uwez nearly got it, but you can, you can change this to be minus x minus three. You can swap it around. You guys see it's the same thing? Three minus six and minus x minus three is the same thing. Because it's minus x, positive three. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
And this we can cancel. So then it's two x minus five divided by minus one, which is minus two x plus five. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the gradient of the graph minus two x plus five?
Hmm, minus two.
How did you know that?
Um.
Isn't it m x plus c and minus two is m?
Yeah, and it's a straight line, right? So do you see how, because it's a straight line graph, it only has one gradient. So therefore, the gradient can just be a number, it doesn't have to have x. Okay, so basically I have to mute, just have to mute that one quickly. Okay. This should not be okay. Is it echoing?
Uh, not anymore.
Yeah, it was, but it's not anymore.
And now, it's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, okay, so. All I wanted to show you here is that, can you see with minus two x? If you apply this rule, you get the same answer. So you've got minus two x to the power of one. And you multiply by one, what do you get? Minus two, right? And then the x's becomes what? To the power of?
Zero.
And what's x to the power of zero?
One.
That's why it's minus two. So it's the same.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Okay, but obviously, if you just see a straight line graph, you don't have to go into all that detail and just, just write it. But I'm just trying to show you that using the same formula still works. Okay? So the second example is very similar. Um, no. Second example is very similar. Because now you also gonna have to factorize. So you guys, could you, wanna guys wanna try factorizing the top?
Yeah, sure.
Three x cubes. You guys get something like this?
Yeah.
So do you see the x minus two is cancelled?
Yeah.
So then you leave with x times three x minus one. So, so when it comes to taking derivatives, always multiply out. So it becomes three x squared minus x. So do you guys wanna try and find the jut of this? Naima, do you wanna try?
Um.
So here's the rule. Multiply by exponent and subtract exponent by one.
Um.
Naima?
So it'll be, um, six x to the power of one, okay? Minus x isn't?
Well, what's minus x? You apply the same rule. I give you a graph y equals minus x. Think of these as separate functions. What's the gradient of minus x?
It's, um, negative one.
So therefore, the derivative is six x minus one. Do you guys see it?
Yeah.
It's easy. Once you know the rule, it's very simple. But just to teach people the rule, you know, it's, it's for the first time, it can be very daunting.
Yeah.
I probably think because we never learned it in school yet.
Yeah, but guys, I promise you gonna watch the concept videos.
Yes, started to watch them.
Okay, one minus two x plus the root x over x squared. Now with this one, the trick is do you guys see there's only one thing in the denominator?
Mm-hmm.
And because there's only one thing in the denominator, you can divide out by each of these terms. So what's one divided by x squared? This is one of x squared. But how can we write this in a nice way?
Um. We can say x to the power of negative two.
Perfect. Okay. And then this one?
So that will be
What's the simplified? That?
Uh, two x to the power of negative one.
Excellent, excellent. You see that, Uwez?
Yeah.
Now what's, what are we gonna do here, guys?
Hmm. We can turn that, um, square root into the power of a half.
So yes, so it becomes x to the half.
Yeah, then be minus x. Exponent.
Then you get?
X to the power of negative three over two.
Perfect, you got it. So now, so do you see how this looks a lot easier to take the derivative of compared to this? So, so before you take the derivative, you first simplify it in this form. So now, Uwez, I want you to do x, x to the minus two derivative for me. Just follow the rule.
So it's minus two x to the power of minus three.
Perfect. Okay, Naima, the second one?
Uh, that will be positive two hmm, to the power of negative two.
Times x to the power of negative two, there we go. And then where's the last one?
Uh, minus three over two x to the power of of.
Not of? Because it's minus one.
Oh, minus, um, five with two.
There we go. So you guys see it's done?
Oh, okay.
Just have to find the answer.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But, but I, I think you guys must understand what, what does it mean? What is the, the gradient, the derivative? Remember I told you this, you got, you get these straight line graphs, right? And they've always got the same gradient. But there are other graphs where the gradients change. There's not one gradient here, right? So that's why they, when you ask for the gradient, they give it to you in terms of x. So you can choose, if I want to know the gradient here. So then I sub in x into the derivative. And then it tells me like sixteen, so I know the gradient is sixteen over here. Do you guys see that?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But it won't be sixteen here. Because x will be a different value that you sub into the derivative.
Should be negative, you know?
It'll be a negative answer, yeah, right. But you guys understand that?
Yeah, we're getting.
That's all they mean by derivative. So just to simplify it for you guys, the graph of y equals x squared is a parabola. Right? What's the gra, what's, what's the derivative of x squared? Wants to do it.
Two x.
It's two x. Right. Now, all this means, if I asked you, Uwez, what's the gradient of the graph when x is five? What would you do?
Ten.
It's ten. You guys understand now? So the, so the point on the graph when x is five is five twenty-five. But at this point, the gradient is two times five, which is ten. So you guys understand why we use derivatives?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I asked you, Naima, what's the gradient when x is minus fifty?
Then you just set up it in, so you'll get negative one hundred.
There we go, so you guys get the concept now. So that's all written by derivative. Derivative is literally gradient. But we, but if I asked you, it's, okay, Uwez, if you asked me what's the gradient of the parabola, I can't tell you three.
Because it's changing.
It changes, so it can't, it's not a straight line. So I have to give it to you in terms of x. So you can choose which value of x you want. And then in the, this function will tell you what the gradient is.
Makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, I see Tamara's there, how are you, Tamara?
I'm good, and you?
Good. Good, good. I'm doing some calculus here. Okay, so they're giving us a function, two x squared. Have you done calculus in school, Tamara? And I don't think you see.
No.
Okay. And I, like that, they also haven't. Naima and Awaes also haven't. So I just told them that the concept videos are very helpful if you want to learn calculus. So don't be, don't, don't worry if it makes, if it sounds a bit um like worrisome, but just ask them, Awaes, you, you didn't know calculus before, but now you kind of have some idea.
Yeah.
You see, so they like took them ten minutes and they've got some ideas, which is, which is good. So so two x squared plus x minus one. This is the graph. What type of graph is this, right, guys?
Oh, parabola.
Is smiling, was it frowning?
Um.
Smiling. How did you know it's smiling?
It's positive. X squared is positive.
The coefficient of x squared is positive. Okay, what's the y intercept?
Negative one.
Negative one, why? Because when you sub in x to the node, yeah. So you guys can already have some idea for the function already. Now it's saying, calculate the equation of the tangent where the gradient equals minus three. Now, there's something that you guys have to know, and I think I spoke about it earlier. But basically, if you wanna work out the, like I told you, our algebraic, you can calculate the gradient, right? You can find the derivative. But you can also find the derivative or the gradient by drawing tangents.
Oh, okay.
Do you guys see that?
Yes.
But now tell me about these tangents. Tell me about the blue tangents. What do you notice about them?
Positive.
How do you know they're positive?
Going, going up.
They're going, oh, they're going up, right? As you go from left to right.
Yeah, basically.
Right? The gradient of the tangent is positive. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Tamara, say it again?
Yeah. No, 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 I got it.
Okay, so yeah, and yeah, what, yeah, Awaes?
It's negative.
Gradient's negative? So just from drawing the tangents, you can get an idea what the gradients of your graph are. You won't get the exact number. But where it gives you like, if it's positive or negative. You guys see?
Yeah.
Are they asking, where's the gradient minus three? So I, my question to you is, is it on the blue side or the, or the green side colors?
On the green side.
Why?
Hmm, because it's negative on the green side.
The gradient is negative. Great. So you know that the, the gradient is gonna be somewhere this side. The point is going to be somewhere this side of the equation. Right? So let's say the tangent's like here. Do you guys see it? So you know it's gonna be negative? Gradient.
Mm hmm.
So they want the equation. But is the tangent, what type of graph is the tangent?
Straight line.
How do you find the equation of a straight line graph?
Um.
The y minus y one.
Have you heard of y minus y one? Yeah. Equals?
Equal to m
to x.
X minus x one.
Yes, so, 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 so you need, you need two things. You need a point. And you need a gradient. So do you know the gradient?
Yes.
What's the?
Yeah.
Minus.
Negative.
Okay. But now you need a point. Do you have a point?
No.
Uh, yeah, you can get the, um, make y is equal to zero.
Hmm, why, why you wanna make y zero?
Can't you get a point that way?
Yeah, but remember, you need the point on the tan, you, you need, you need the point where the tangent touches the graph. Because we saying that the gradient of the tangent is minus three. Right? And the gradient of the tangent is the same as the gradient of the graph at the point of contact. So if the tangent's gradient is minus three, then the graph's gradient is minus three where the tangent cuts the graph. Do you guys?
Okay.
Sorry.
That's why you, you can't just sub in note because that's not part of the tangent. That's part of this.
So can we sub the three in y's place?
But remember, the negative three is not y. It's the correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So why, how sure are we that it's, that it's like the y value isn't zero at where the ten? How do you assume where the tangent is going to be?
So it's not that it's not zero, but it's, but it's not part of the graph. So we, we, we need a, we need, we need to use a point that is definitely on the tangent. And the only point that we know is definitely on the tangent is where it touches the graph, that point. So we need to find this point where it touches the graph. Do you guys?
Yes, but my, but my question is, how do we know the tangent is definitely there?
It's not definitely there. Um, it's just somewhere, somewhere, but it doesn't actually matter. It doesn't affect our calculation. It could be here. If we wanted to. But it doesn't, it hasn't affected this calculation yet. It won't affect calculation. I'm just drawing it so you can see.
Okay.
We just, we know it's not here. Cause it's negative. Okay. So let me check, guys, what, what, what I would do. So we know the derivative is minus three, right? The gradient is minus three. Right?
Yeah.
Can't we work out the derivative of the graph? What's the derivative of the graph? Naima, do I try?
Um. Yeah, okay, uh, it will be four to the power of um four x, okay?
Four is the power of one.
Mm hmm. Less x minus one.
No, 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 maybe you do it on each term. You do the derivative on each term.
So I must multiply by two also the x, so two x plus two x.
No, 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 no. Take each term separately. Do this, apply that rule on each term. So this will be four x, right? Two times four, plus two, and then x is just gonna be one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And minus one.
I'm gonna put that at.
No, this is, these are separates.
Okay.
What's the gradient minus one? What's the gradient of the graph y equals minus one?
Minus one.
Hmm hmm. What does the graph of minus one look like? Y equals minus one? You guys know? It's horizontal line. Y equals minus one.
So it's gonna be zero.
Gradient is zero, horizontal line. So therefore this just becomes, so whenever you have a constant in your function, the gradient is zero. And prove, I can prove it to you. Um. If we write it like this, guys, you've got minus one, but that's the same as minus one times x to the note. You guys agree?
Yeah.
So apply the rule. The derivative rule?
Zero.
You multiply by zero. And what happens when you multiply by zero?
One.
Zero.
Oh, no.
That's why it's zero. So you guys? Um. Right. Okay, so does anybody understand this? So yeah, so yes, the, so this is the, this is the derivative of the graph. So what this means, see, if I asked you, what's the gradient of the graph when x is two? You subbing two into here.
It's nine.
Right? But we want to know where, where the graph negative three, which point?
So must you make that equal to minus three?
Yes. Because if you put it equal to minus three, you're asking the graph, you're asking the equation to tell you, equation, please tell me which value of x will give me a gradient of three?
Okay.
Can you see that? You're asking the graph, the equation, cause that's actually what you're doing when you, when you have any equation, you're asking, please tell me which value of x will give me a gradient of three?
So it will give you negative one, x is equal to negative one.
So that means when x is minus one, the gradient is minus three. But we need, we need the y value, right? Cause we need a point.
Yeah.
Got x one, now we do.
So much, you sub it back.
Sub it back in here.
Oh.
Should be zero. Hello?
Yes.
Did you get, what did you get? Zero. Zero. Naima, did you get zero?
Yeah.
So what does that mean?
So at that point, the gradient is minus three.
So that means, so, so you were actually right. So on the x axis, that is where the gradient of the graph is minus three. Do you guys see that?
Yep.
Because when you subbed in north, or you subbed in minus one, which is, which is where the x intercept, right? You subbing minus one into the gradient function, which is four x plus one, it becomes minus four plus one, which is minus three. So therefore, the equation of the graph of the, of the tangent is y minus the y value is north, right? So y the y value is north, so y equals minus three x. So minus three times x plus one, which is y equals minus three x minus three. Do you guys see that?
Yep.
Yep.
So this is a common exam question, but you see, guys, how just by understanding that when the gradient touches the tangent, tangent touches the graph, it's the same. Okay? As the point of contact. Okay. Okay. Okay, let's just leave that. Okay, next question. Oh, this looks like the, have you guys done proportionality in class?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys are not, not so, where are you, okay? You guys can teach me this one.
Um, I absolutely hate geometry.
Okay. In the sketch alongside, two intersecting circles are shown. Okay, you, can you guys see the two circles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, and, yeah, okay, you guys can see it. Uh, Q is not a tangent. That's important. So let's actually just just to make it easier for ourselves, yeah? Uh, PQ is not a tangent. Okay, PQ is not a tangent to the circle PTSD. Parent, what? Isn't this parent teachers? Anyway, sometimes they do that, actually, to this thing. Yeah. So what is PTSD, guys? What, what type of shape is it? It's cyclicoid. Right? What are the properties of a cyclicoid?
Opposite angles are equal to one eighty, the exterior angle is equal to the opposite interior, all that stuff.
Yeah, so if I make this blue, then, then that is blue. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or if I make um
s two.
I make this green.
P one.
That's green. No, sorry. It's the same, no, it's the same, actually. Yeah. No, because everything opposite. Yeah. What you say is two? Is two, yeah, is gonna, is?
P one.
P one? Okay. Um. P. Yeah, nothing else, eh? But there's also another cyclicoid. What's the other cyclicoid?
PQR. PQRT.
PQR. T. So do you agree we can apply the same rules? Um. You, you know, when you rules that we can apply?
Hmm.
Trying to think to myself, is this anything? You can say Q one plus equals to one eighty minus t.
Yeah.
Cause they're opposites, yes. But I'm just thinking, is there anything, there's not a butterfly thing going on here, no. It is not a core, it's not a, some of the circumference. Okay. Um. Well, this is interesting because do you guys agree that um these two triangles are similar?
Yeah, cause two angles are equal, and then you could just say the third one. Too many angles, something.
You guys see this? Those two triangles are similar. Because they're both blue and a green. But I'm just looking at the questions they're asking here. They've got Q R and A R and P R. Cause it's basically if we just rearrange this, so it's Q R over A R equals P R over Q R. That's possibly the relationship that we have to find. So we've got P R. Um. Let's just see. Q R over A R. And they want Q R over A R. Maybe there's another triangle that we've been missing here. Let's just see rays. You see, guys, the thing is, this was, 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 was You see, guys, things with, with proportionality. It's, it's almost, is, there's no set way of doing it, you just have to know the concepts. And then you have to just do lots of practice. So I'm just trying to figure out, because we, we know that those two. Maybe there's another relationship that we're missing. Let's make that be. Let's just make that larger. Because they want, they want QR. They want that, so let's just see. QR and AR. Yeah. QR and AR PR and QR. PR. QR over QR. Yes. QR over AR. Actually, wouldn't it said, wouldn't the opposite also just be true? I mean, if we just say. Okay, that is. That's a cyclicoid. So we know that Q two plus, I have a feeling that we have to try and prove that QR and, um. This triangle is similar to. This triangle. So they've, they've got the same angle, right? They've got a common angle, so it's labeled that is rate. Might have to show that. Can we know that A two equals Q one plus P two? A two equals Q one plus P two. And P two. Equals, it's just hard, I said, you know. You guys have any ideas? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, speaking.
Q one plus P two. That's a cyclicoid, one plus P two. This is blue. It's also blue. We can show if we either. Blue, something to associate.
Um, can you say that A two equals to Q one plus P two?
A two equals Q one, Q one plus P two, yes, yes, we, yes, we win. But I would, I, I would that, uh. The, Aklak is saying that this A two is equal to that, which is theorem two. You see, it's always easier when somebody sends me a question, then I can just sit with it, and it's not like, uh. Like you're under pressure, feels like exams. I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sit with it afterwards, and then I'll send, I'll send you a video to the group. So that we don't waste too much time. Okay? And the same with that other one, let's try, let's do the identity. Is that okay? I'll still send the video to the group, okay? Okay. Which one, Aklak, which you need to want out with?
Which everyone's, which everyone's gonna do, that's my first one.
I mean, which one, I mean, they all, it's all very similar. Do I, do you guys, how comfortable are you guys with reduction?
Fairly okay, yeah.
Yes, you have an approach to reduction.
Can we do C one and two, please?
C one and two. Oh, this is, this is, we made a concept video on this. Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, this, this is actually in the concept video, so, because this is how you derive the formulas. How you derive the formulas. So you made a constant video, but, but it's basically, you, you, you rewrite it as cos of ninety minus. So for example, like, I'll just give you a quick hint. Because the idea is that you, you know what this is, you know what cos of A minus B, so you can rewrite cos of A plus B as cos of. Ninety minus A. Sorry, cos of A minus minus B. Do you agree? So then that becomes cos of A minus negative B, so then that becomes cos A. Cos of negative B. Plus sine A. And sine of negative B. But cos of negative B is the same as cos of B, but sine of negative B is negative sine, which is why this becomes negative. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's why the formula for cos A plus B is there. And in any, any other concept videos, we show you how to do that. Do you guys have any other questions? Okay, look at this one. Maybe it will be kinder. You see, the thing is, that's, that's always say to people, when it comes to geometry. You have to be strong with the concepts, but a lot of the time, you just have to try lots of just, lots of tech, lots of. Different approaches, sometimes your first approach won't work, and that's fine. But the problem is, people don't have approaches, so they just know one way, so you have to learn different ways of answering. Questions. Because in the exam, they're gonna give you something that you've never seen before. I mean, that's just a given, Aklak, am I right? They're gonna give you something that, that you've never seen before. Oh, he's not here. He, they're gonna give you something you've never seen before, and people are gonna, people always panic when they, when they see that, but I, I promise you. When you look at the memo for that difficult question, it's always the same. Uh, it's always concepts that you've been taught, just twisted in some way, but it's the same. Okay, let's look at this, when this question was like, QR is the diameter. Uh, of a circle, so what do we know about diameters of circles? You're right, it's obtained an angle of ninety, so what does that mean? What, what's ninety?
T three.
Yeah, and V three.
T three and?
V three.
Yeah, awesome. And they say that, um, does anybody understand why it's V three also? Because yeah, yes, one subtended is another subtended. Okay? PR is a tangent, so we can apply tan code. So if we make R one blue. What else is gonna be blue? Yeah, we'll say Q, yeah, the. Yeah, so it's Q two, do you guys understand? Because. The tangent is making an angle with the chord, which is VR, so you just look at the angle opposite.
Oh, I didn't realize that VR was, was a chord also.
Yeah, VR is a chord, and you could also say it makes an angle with T on. So this R one plus R two is equal to Q one plus Q two. So we could maybe do it like this and say that, and that's. Now it's saying prove that V is R and RSQ are similar, is V is R. V is R. And V, V is R, yeah, okay, well, we start from, V is R. So we have V is R and RSQ. Okay. Okay, okay, RSQ, um, yes, they are similar. Do you guys see? Let me just draw it out for you, yes, V is R. And, uh. Yes, RSQ. So do you see, they both got a blue? And they're both share side angle.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and that means that V four is also ninety, right? Yeah. Good. Prove that PTVS. PTVS, where's that now? Okay, uh, is a cyclicoid. Okay. So how do we prove that things are cyclicoid?
Exterior angle is equal to the interior opposite.
Oh, they're also, so sorry, PS equals S R. You see a. PS equals S R, we didn't see that. Because it's really relevant now. S two equals T one, if S two equals T one. PTVS. If that's nineteen. That's nineteen. Okay, um, if that's nineteen, then that's blue, ninety blue. So R three. R, um. R two and three. Is equal to S two. PTVS. Let's do something with S two. If we, we need to show that T one is equal to S two. Now, can we do that? Or we can show. That. P or V two. Is equal to P.
Or that, um, E three is equal to S one.
E three, V three?
No, T three is equal to S one.
N- no. Because the cyclicoid is PTVS.
Oh, no, you can't say that, because it, it's T three plus T.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
If that, if they're both ninety, and they're both equal. Sure. They have the same angle B. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Wait, we, we said, we said that R one plus R two equals Q one plus S two, right? Q one plus Q two. Q one plus Q two. Right, wait, wait. Getting somewhere, but. It, that, the, the. That, the, the. The. Must be. Years, years angle. And we've got a ninety. Yeah, we've got. That's ninety. This is ninety. Right? That's ninety. So. R three. Because here you've got, you've got a green and. So now, how does that help us? Um, we need to show that's a second chord. So. Green nineteen. We gotta get this, guys, I'm, otherwise I will sit with it, and I will send it to you guys, luckily it is a, it's an easy one. But at least, it's, you're probably missing something simple.
But P also equal to R one plus two, because of the associative triangle.
P? P, say it again?
P equal to R one plus two.
P equals R one plus two.
Because it's an associative triangle.
Is it associative? Which one's associative?
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I'm gonna sit with it now, and I will. I'll go through it, and I will make a video for this question. Right now, it's just not clicking for me. And, and, I mean, it happens, guys, it happens, you know, you, sometimes, when I was. In high school, they used to say to me that sometimes you just see it. And sometimes you don't, and you just have to practice as much as you can. Aklak, do you have any ideas?
No, no.
The, the. Wait, 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 this is also ninety. This is a diameter. That's a, that's ninety as well. So it's blue nineteen. Black. Or blue ninety, black. It, we need to show that V two is green. Or that is two is black. What T one is black. T one is black. Blue. Hmm. Eventually, if it gets too much, then I erase everything, sort of, because maybe, because if sometimes you draw too much, then you can actually miss things. I'm gonna have a look at it, guys, and I'll send it to the group. When we eventually find it, and if I don't find it, I will ask one of the other tutors to look at it. Um. Yeah, I think, I think that's probably the best thing for both those questions. Yeah. Okay, are there any other questions? So you've got Nafisa B. Shay. Guys, any questions? It doesn't have to be a specific question, like if you have a particular concept that you're not sure about, I can explain that if you. Do you guys have any, any other concepts?
Not really.
We all find, it can be any section. Naima, Nafisa, Tamana. Because if we all find, then I will just take a look at the questions and send it later on, if you have, in, if you don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I think that's okay. I don't know about everyone now.
Yeah, then we can end the meeting now, then I will work on these and send it when I, when I have the chance.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, guys. See you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, see you.